Must be crazy.
For a girl has to do it two years.
Hey, did you go to Peoria?
What?
I went to Peoria today or yesterday?
I went to Peoria yesterday.
You actually worked yesterday?
I worked yesterday. I worked today. I did some work today.
We try. We try.
What, what, how am I not gonna?
Oh, no, thanks for being here. How you doing?
My people took yesterday off.
Oh, man, I wish. I'm not in that category, buddy. I'm working.
You're hardcore, I know.
Hardcore.
I know.
I worked really hard. Like nine to two. I put in a lot of time.
That's, that's two-fold.
It was a difficult day.
Gotta love it.
He was actually on the clock. Seven until four. Like he counts the first times of his drive as work.
That's right.
Correct.
The issue is like get in the car.
He drives a Porsche.
You're a car guy.
If you're driving to work, it would be a work car plane.
There you go.
Well, that's what he's driving to work. For work, so.
Yep, in his work car.
Okay, let's go. Let's go.
Pat, you ready? Alright, it is 6:00 PM. We'll call this regular village board meeting to order. If you'd all please stand and join us in a moment of silence. And also the pledge of allegiance? I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Mr. Clerk, could you take your role, please?
Trusty Nice.
Present.
Trusty Try. Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trusty Charo.
Present.
Trusty Gerger.
Here.
Trusty Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kimsey.
Present.
I'd like to set aside public announcements and public comments until after our presentations. Any objection? Hearing none. Under new business, we have four resolutions tonight. One of my favorite points of the year when we get to recognize some of our super athletes that we have here representing the village. So I would entertain a motion to put resolutions 10-23 through 13-23 all on the table as a single vote.
Make the motion.
Trusty Gerger's made a motion, seconded by trustee Fletcher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye too, so go ahead and record that one.
It's done.
What we're doing tonight is we're recognizing achievements of our Chatham Chargers for their success at the state basketball championships and skills contest. So we have four resolutions. The first one tonight is recognizing the achievements of the Chatham Chargers high school teams, who were the Special Olympics High School Division Basketball Gold Medal winners. So we have official resolution copy for each of the members of the team here. So what I would do is I'll call the athletes up. If you're here, you can come up and get your copy and we'll send all the rest with Diane to be distributed. And then I believe Diane, what she would like to do is after, after we get through all four of these, we'll get everybody back up to take a big group picture with all the Chargers in our board, so. Congratulations to the high school division basketball gold medal winners. Lucas Homa, Eli Hobson, Jasmine Caulfield, Casey Smith, Caleb Fur, Carter Vass, Hunter Vass, Aiden Kiefer, Justin Mizalik, Orlando Orlando Johnson and Calvin Carter, who were led by their coaches, Don Homa and Don Williams, with the team manager, Michael Williams. So congratulations to the high school. Yeah, if you're-
And then you can sit down and then we'll come all back up at the end and take a picture.
Congratulations, yes, Don. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Reach out, guys. Congratulations. Well done.
She printed two copies of that one and missed me one.
Can you pull it up?
Oh, never mind. Never mind.
I can.
Jill would never be wrong.
Might be a non-issue.
You want resolution 1123?
Twenty-three. Alright, so this is the white team who won gold medals at the Illinois Special Olympic State Championship as well. So congratulations to the members of the white team. Spencer Mullen, Keegan Fox, Eric Fox, Christian Clem, Tyler Eilman, Jacob Jankowski, Kellen McCormick, Bryce McAlas, Trey Harris, and Colin Small, all led by their coaches, Mark Mullen and Mark Scott.
Congratulations.
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 Congrats, you guys.
Congrats.
Well done.
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you, Coach.
Oh, I see you have to have your papers.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Then to recognize the achievements of the Chatham Chargers red team, who won a silver medal at the state competition. These members are Chase Metz, Jason Shepard, Chad Underwood, Samantha O'Neal, Ben Simpson, Cameron Huffins, Jonathan Meese, Jacob Burke, Jacob Seelbach, Sam Forrester, Mason Bus, Chris Pierce, Paxton McBride, and Alex Spears, who were led by their coaches, Ken Metz and Ed Jankowski.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Way to go.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Good work, you guys.
Congratulations.
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 Well done.
Congratulations.
Good job.
And we also like to recognize the achievements of the Chatham Chargers skills teams, who competed individually at the state basketball championships in their skills. And these members are Nora Lyons, who won a fourth ribbon, Kevin Hans with the bronze medal, Callie Enen with the silver medal, Jacob Boyd with the gold medal, Emma Kimsey with the gold medal, Francis Piper with the gold medal, and Soren Weems with the gold medal. And they're led by their coaches, Elise Caruso, Emma Kern, Brittany Bradford, and Aubrey Woods. So congratulations.
Good job, Jacob.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job, Calla.
Good job.
Good job, Emma. Got it? Good job, buddy.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Alright Diane, if you'd like to get everybody where you want them for a picture.
This is the best squad team though, right? They're all tall, right?
Step out.
No. Come on back here, Kevin. All the way back.
You wanna take the podium more?
Okay.
We'll come around.
Well, I keep going all the way around, I think. I wish we had some guidance, but we're just, uh, we just. Come on back, guys.
Alright.
How's that?
Got it?
You can just keep that for him.
Ready?
Go sideways, you'll fit more in. And you'll look smaller. And you'll look smaller. It's the tricks. I am so proud of all you Chatham Chargers. On three, Chatham Chargers. One, two, three.
Good job.
Great job.
Good job, Mimi Die.
Congratulations.
Aw, thanks, Don. This is awesome. Thanks for just always giving your time.
Jacob?
Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, I just got voted in again.
Well, you do.
Alright, guys.
Thank you, guys.
No, a trustee is what they call.
Everybody have a good evening.
Absolutely.
Good job, Chargers.
Congratulations, guys.
You're too small, but.
Good work, Chargers.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good for you. Cause I used to run a show.
Great job.
Well, I'm glad you made it.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. Good job.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, you guys.
Bye.
No, thanks for coming. Thanks for taking our stuff. Alright, you guys.
I wish we could've gotten Emma up here. I was ready to just like. Emma didn't get to be up here.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Glad to come up.
You guys were awesome. Finally, a team outdoes the cross-country team.
Energy in that group is just amazing.
The state has to be mad when we show up.
I know.
Get all the golds and the silvers.
Comes the red team. Alright.
What's wrong? You can go. I'll call time out.
Now, we'll, we'll back up. Are there any public announcements this evening?
How cool is that? That's really cool.
It was fun. The hours that they put into practice is amazing.
Les Morgan with the Chatham American Legion and a VFW. Fish fries are done. They were successful and thank you Kirsten for your help and she was there every week except for the one, but she gets a gold star on the next.
She always gets a gold star.
Memorial brick applications for the veterans of Memorial will be, the deadline is April the 28th. Veterans and guitars will be meeting on April the 12th, which is tomorrow, and the 26th. Usually we're veterans with guitars, they get together and jam, have a jam session, so.
They have guitars? They have instruments, right?
Yes, yes, yes. No weapons, or.
No weapons.
But it's just a bunch of guys getting together, just making music.
That's awesome.
And then the VFW Queen of Hearts is on Tuesday nights. They're now serving food. So stop by over there for that. And then this Saturday at the VFW, we have coffee and donuts from eight to 10. Just sit around and shoot the breeze and talk about anything and everything. So, thank you.
Any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none. We're now to item five under new business, which is a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Get a motion to bring this to the floor.
And make the motion.
Trusty Ferguson's made a motion to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Charo. This is the MFT plan that Jim reviewed with everybody at the last meeting. Any further discussion or questions regarding the resolution?
No, sir.
Mr. Clerk, could you take your role?
Trusty Fletcher.
Yes.
Trusty Gerger.
Yes.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Trusty Ferguson.
Yes.
Trusty Nice.
Yes. Item six is a resolution approving special event permit. Can I motion put this on the table with this?
Oh, the table?
Table with this.
Yep.
We're waiting on an insurance certificate.
Got you.
Trusty Gerger.
Second to table.
Second, alright. That'll stay on the agenda. Is there a motion to bring the consent agenda to the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Nice made a motion to have a second.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Fletcher. Any discussion regarding the warrants or the minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk?
Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Ferguson.
Yes.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Trusty Gerger.
Yes.
Trusty Fletcher.
Absolutely.
Is there any additional public comment on other village business? Hearing none. Next village board meeting, 6:00 PM on April 25th. I'll take a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Charo's made a motion to have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by trustee Nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.
Alrighty. What happened to our gavel? We used to have a little gavel. Now I gotta use my fist.
The foam gavel is.
Hold on, here's a stapler.
No.
What else can we talk about?
In a pinch.
Gotta be on the agenda.
Got outvoted.
Yeah.
I lost.
You ready for the committee?
Let's go.
It is. Six sixteen. We're calling the committee of the whole to order. Clerk, are you ready?
Yep.
Roll.
You okay? Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Try. Trusty Try. Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trusty Charo.
Present.
Trusty Gerger.
Here.
Trusty Fletcher.
He's available.
Village President Kimsey.
Present.
Alright. Can I have a, let's see, any public comments? Hearing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes from Tuesday, March 14th. Motion by trustee Ferguson. Can I have a second to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Nice. All in, uh, we can't do all in favor.
We can do all in favor, but there's only one item.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. No old business, new business, CMT engineering update.
Oh, we like these.
I don't know. It's a little, it's a little small tonight.
You're calling his, it's, he's.
We have glasses on, bud.
Just use your readers.
Yeah, your readers are your.
You want us to read it for you? Read it out loud?
There, if you wanna hold that.
Hey, if I could hold it?
It gets worse with age.
MFT resolution items, uh, you know, as you guys just voted on that, uh, you know, the main item out of that is going to be the concrete patching along spruce. Uh, we will be doing a material letting to solicit bids for concrete to enable the village crews to use tho, that material in excess of $20,000 to do the patching along, uh, spruce. That's gonna be the main area of focus this year. And then, uh, we will be picking up and coordinating, uh, with village staff, another, um, uh, project. It'll be kind of a more of an experimental overlay job, um, looking at trying to find a feasible way to overlay some of these, uh, smaller cul-de-sac or, um, you know, areas that, um, are in built-out subdivisions that don't have a lot of traffic, but, uh, as we talked a bit before, our focus has been on the higher volume roads, the more used roads, and putting the money towards those because those are the most expensive to upkeep. But we can't neglect the smaller roads either, so, uh, we're gonna try something out on that this year as well. Uh, Gordon Drive spoke with Truman Flat on that. They're looking at, uh, first of May to start that project back up again, uh, with the asphalt plants opening up again. And then, uh, talked to, uh, PH Broughton here, uh, this week, the plumber patching, uh, project and the bike trail patching project will commence next week.
Ooh.
Uh, the bike path project with the asphalt, uh, in South Park, that will be probably early May, middle of May is when that one will start. So, once again, depending on when the asphalt plants open up. Uh, Manor Hills Platte two subdivisions moving along. They're looking for kind of a late, uh, May completion on that project as well. Um, we're gonna be presenting the final plat at the next, uh, zoning committee and then you guys will get that, uh, later in May to vote on and approve. And then, uh, we have two projects that are currently out to bid. Um, one is the building demo for the square, uh, based on the grant money, uh, received for that. And, uh, so that's out to bid here. Next, uh, week and a half, we'll be taking bids for those, um, and awarding that project. And then the other one is, uh, ARPA funds for a backup, uh, standby generator out at the ground storage tank, so. We'll have some, uh, results on that here, uh, by our next meeting, so.
Jim, did I understand? So plumber's gonna start next week?
Plumber will start next week, yes.
I, I thought you had said it was gonna wait till school got out.
The area in front of the school. So what we have is, um, as we discussed at the last meeting, um, we're gonna be using ARPA money for the patching on plumber, uh, to help facilitate, uh, federal, uh, reporting guidelines. As much of that money as we can use before our fiscal year, the better. And because the bids came in so low, we'd like to extend that project up to the upper limit. But the extension of that project will be the area near the school. So we wanna wait until school gets out to do that.
That part. Okay, so I misunderstood. I apologize.
Yeah, we're gonna start over on the area, uh, west side first.
School gets out at 3:30, they'll start at 3:45.
3:45. 3:45 till about 8 o'clock in the morning, so. Take a day or two.
That's great.
Thank you.
Learn that, that's all I have to report for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, enough? No further discussion? Moving along.
You'll expect to see ordinance.
Right out the door. He's gone, folks.
Village manager update.
Village manager update. We've been very, very busy here lately. Uh, all the departments have been working on their budgets, putting things together. Dustin has been chasing his tail around with the bids coming in and trying to get projects lined up and then more bids that are waiting for projects to come in on. Jim talked about a couple of those, the, the demo of the building over there. Those are due, I think, next Thursday. And then it's probably around the same time for the bids for the generator, so. Two projects that we've been really looking forward to getting work on. The company that we hired to put together the, uh, Economic Development Plan has been working this last month. And we did a report on what they've got done so far today. Ian Kara have been working, or Caleb have been working on, uh, putting together our response for this past fiscal year's, uh, thing for ARPA. We've been going over, uh, doing the appraisals for the employees and working on projected income and expenses so that we can turn around and give you guys a good overview of a budget coming up. So it's been, it's been really busy. A lot of the problems that we were having with paycom has finally calmed down. We still have a few little things here and there, but, uh, Jill and Kayla have done a fantastic job of working with those people and constantly hounding them to give us what they promised us. Police Department, they've been doing a lot of training and they did an exercise over at the school. I don't know if you wanna talk any, any about that at all, or, or just that you guys did an exercise over at the school?
Um, as far as, uh, individual training, like three or four officers, uh, per time at, at the school. What we got coming up, it will be a full exercise being done at the school here, uh, the end of this month. Where, uh, some schools have to be involved with the, with the full exercise. Unfortunately, it'd be an active shooter type, uh, scenario.
Vern, which building you guys going to?
We'll be at the high school.
Fred Thompson has put together a plan to put, uh, about every week a kinda heads-up page on emergency disasters and how to be prepared for them. They'll be on the front of our village webpage and also on the Facebook page. We posted the first one yesterday. Do you think of anything else, Dustin?
Pat?
We need the transfer ordinance.
Yeah, before, yeah. Before you start, Kara.
Kayla. My daughter-in-law's name's Kara. Come on, man.
I know where it comes from. You're family now, is what it is. Is, uh, Chief Self, Chief Self still planning on doing their training?
He, uh, he sent some guys over there the other day. Uh, they promised me they wouldn't damage too much stuff, uh, so, yeah. But they're, they're gonna use the buildings to do, uh, some entry, uh, training for their fire officers and, or their police their fire department.
It's been a long day, hasn't it?
It has been a long day. I, I went home, I told Laura, I was like, God, I'm tired today.
So while we've been prepping and Vern, Vern, you guys coordinated some stuff to do. You did canine training over at those buildings too as well, so. Very unique spot where we got a lot of agencies that got access to facilities that they normally don't continue to use or to be able to tear up a little bit, so. Brings our bids down on.
Demo should almost be free.
Demo, demo's way down because it's really weak from the dog bites and the fire department's axes at this point in times. And then.
Our, our, uh, consultant for helping us get certified with, uh, NERC and FERC, we spent an hour, hour and a half long phone call with him and CWLP since they manage our substations. Most of the stuff that they take care of is the stuff that we need to be able to put into our plan, so. They've been absolutely fantastic to work with, so the guys at, uh, the electric department and CWLP have been great, so.
And then budget-wise, also at our next meeting, there'll be the ordinance that we passed that authorizes the expenditures into the new fiscal year, um, based on the prior year's budget. Until such time as we adopt the new ones. That will also be there in two weeks.
And probably in a couple of weeks, we'll make an offer to you all to come in again and hear what the highlights and, and, and the details of the budget ahead of time. You can take advantage of that again if you'd like, or if you don't, just let us know. But we'll, we'll let you know when the, the times are available.
Well, if you could do us a favor, at least for myself, I'm sure the other guys team would agree, uh, thank, uh, Casey and Barry on the work they're doing out the parks. I know those, uh, been some, they've been doing a lot of work out there so people can park out there. I know it's nowhere near complete, but they've been doing a lot of work, so. It's definitely been recognized.
Good.
Uh, Kayla?
Kara.
Kara, Kara. Sorry. I'm just gonna start doing it. Kara.
Call her gay.
Call her gay, yeah.
Quite gay.
It's called a K.
I sent you guys all the draft supplemental transfer ordinance, and this is routine. We do it every year. This is just draft form, so we'll have the actual ordinance official next board meeting to pass these few changes that we have. Everything was pretty routine, just trying to get it all balanced and what we need by the end of this fiscal year, which is the end of this month. One thing we had was a supplemental. That's when we just raised the budget up and we basically use, you know, cash on hand because we have it available because of increased revenue received during the year. It was an emergency storm sewer repair.
It was.
Yeah.
It was caused by a garage to start to fall into the hole, and it was too much for a resident or anybody like that to take on. So we hadn't budgeted that amount, but we had to hire a contractor to come in. They had the right equipment and material to be able to take care of that, so.
Is that the only reason we were over the 95K?
That's where I had to raise the number.
That's what, that's all that.
That's all of that. Yep, yep. So that covers.
We haven't done that before, but we had to this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try not to have that happen, but emergencies, that's what the supplemental is there for, to be able to do that. And then I had, oh, you mentioned the ordinance at the next meeting for the budget to resume after the fiscal year begins to operate our regular operations without the new budget being passed, so.
Before, our department has the flaws on this, and Stacey, Kayla, if you look at that sheet, the few things that we have to move around to be able to make everything balance, it's unbelievable for the amount and size of budget and all the things that we do here, to be able to still hit it that close is.
Yeah, they're pretty, pretty little, pretty little movements. We try our best to hit it, hit it on the dot, but there's always a little bit of tweaking depending on what happens throughout the year, so does anybody have questions on that?
Thank you for being good at that.
There's definitely less adjustments than last year.
Help me too, so.
Thank you, Kayla. You're very good at your job. We appreciate you.
Well, they had to get him.
There's less adjustments than last year. I know that for fact. There's definitely way less adjustments.
The display case was several grand. I'm sure they had moved.
And the way she displays it and explains it.
Very easy.
All right, so trustee Tri is not here, which makes our very own Dustin Patterson the star of this next show. Public comments, yes.
We did have a meeting last night. It's next month, but just, Kristen wanted me to update everybody on what's going on in the parks. Jim did say that we are working from Piper Glen to Plummer. They're going to do some concrete patching and fix that bad area. We've had several people wrecked there and get hurt, so we're going to go in there this year and spend the $30,000 that you guys allotted us to repair the bike trail and start working on that here on Monday.
Piper to Plummer, you said?
Piper Glen.
Yeah. Awesome.
And then the West Park fields that we had in the grant, we finally got those dry, and we've almost got them ready to play on. I'm trying to make sure those are ready to go for the kids at the end of the month when they start their games. The parking lot expansion that John talked about, Barry and Casey and Tristan and those guys did an awesome job. They already extended the little pickleball parking lot and added, I don't know, several stalls we'll be able to paint in there over the next, over the summer. The other part of the parking lot, we're waiting for PH Broughton to resurface, they remove the bike trail, and as they do that, we'll extend that parking lot out, but the patch, the asphalt, isn't available until the end of the month. So we have to wait until then, but we'll have that done here. And baseball, soccer, and flag football are starting their seasons, and so the guys are mowing. Athletic fields are very busy, and the parks are full each night, so what's going on?
And the fields look great.
They do.
The park looks good.
The field's like great right now.
Only question I had, I was on the pickleball courts on the east side, or, yeah, west side. There's still some of those old fence posts that stick out about three inches out for a little bit of a way.
I'm kind of scared.
Yes.
I've got to sit there for a reason because we used to have poles attached to them.
Right.
So I know if I pull them out, as soon as we do that, the fence is going to be an issue, but.
Right.
I think we're good, so I'll get those pulled out.
Even if we just put something over them, I didn't. I'm, I wouldn't fall on them, but somebody at the pickleball courts said something. I'm like.
Yeah, not by hand. Not by hand. Right.
One last thing. Trustee Tri mentioned something about a project and a baseball dugout.
I think we have an Eagle Scout.
Eagle Scout, that's.
I don't think he's here tonight, but. He's, so I think they're looking for a project, and I recommended that they can put in like batting helmet racks and bat racks in the dugout for the kids.
Oh, my God.
For the season. It's something we've never done before, but I thought a lot of kids would get used to that.
Nice. Yeah, I think he was working on it with you.
We appreciate that, too.
Yeah, we're supposed to meet them sometime in the near future to go over that. That'd be great.
That's fun.
Two of our senior grass cutters that have been helping us out for years retired this year. Chester Hoheimer and Steve Sullivan, and they've done a great job for us over the years. And Dustin found two guys to come in and take their place.
And, they look, every time I've been there, it looks cut and good.
Yeah, it looks really. I would tell Steve that I think these guys definitely do a better job than he did, so. But that's the way Steve is, so he would, he would take it in good stride. We also hired a new lineman, so we're up to full strength with linemen, and we have probably 20 applications for the locator groundsman position that's going to be coming open this summer, so.
Awesome. Good.
Things are looking up.
Yes, they are. Utility Oversight Committee, do we have?
We had nothing for the meeting this time.
I figured we're all good there. Is it safe to say everybody's happy?
Everybody's happy. We think they're all happy. We haven't heard anything from them.
We did have one gentleman that had a large leak. He got shut off. He came in and paid his bill. We turned it back on, and we have stressed to him at least three times that he has a large leak at his house, but he is not.
Doesn't care.
And I tried to get a neighbor to go over and help and talk to him and stuff. Hopefully that will resolve it, but.
It is all.
Did he? Oh, good. I was like, man, I do not like charging people for water that they just don't, just let it go down the drain.
All righty. Any public comments on village business? Hearing none. Our next scheduled meeting for the committee of the whole is May 9th, and we do have a reason to go into closed session. For personnel to see one. Can I have a motion to enter executive session?
I make a motion.
All right. Trustee Ferguson has made a motion. Can I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Trustee Nice has seconded the motion, and all in favor? Roll call. Roll call.
Trustee Nice?
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said pass. Trustee Gerger?
Here.
Trustee Charles?
Yes. Yes.
He said I'd make him vote again if I was you.
There's going to be no business following.
Fletcher's confused.
We will adjourn afterwards.
Oh, is it okay to turn the camera?
It's okay to turn the camera off.